Alright, let's call the committee of the whole meeting open at 8:33 PM. Let's go on to the adoption of the agenda. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented, seconded by Councilor Lelant. I do have a change to propose, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me. Yes? I'd just like to ask that we address 9.6 before item 9.1 because we have here people in attendance here tonight that are directly concerned by this matter, so I should not adjournly keep them here. It would be appreciated if we deal with this first. Fine, let's go on now to disclosures of peculiar interests, presentations and delegations. Mr. John Messman, South Nation Conservation, update on the municipal work plans. You realize that you have 10 minutes, don't you? Yes, that's fine, yes. I'm just getting accustomed to this. Well, members of council, and thank you for allowing us to give you an overview of our plan for this year. My name is John Messman and I'm the South Nation Conservation Group leader. We have some guests with us today. She has a few updates to give to you with regard to our presentation. The purpose of our presentation is to share our municipal work plan with you, and each and every year we adopt a work plan to guide our decisions and our budgets, and we work also to ensure that we have a grasp on how the work should be shared amongst our 16 municipality members. Now, we create this work plan each and every year and we use this as a means of dialogue between staff and yourselves, and this year we went above and beyond. We made it into a nice document. We thought it might be worthwhile to share it with you, the sharing of information, if you wish, if you'd like to take a look at it. But basically what it does is that it highlights everything that we do in all of our programs and services, and in a couple of key categories, and we use this when we talk to staff. Helen and I met some time ago to determine what kind of work we wish to do in each of our municipalities, what impact it will have with our partners, and what it will look like in the coming weeks. And what Michelle and I are going to highlight, some of the highlights, such as protecting people and property, land stewardship, and that sorts of things, and those sorts of things. So let's go on now to property stewardship. If you have your work plan, this is our stewardship section, highlights what we'll be doing each section for each of our members, we'll be including what we do in this program area for everyone. And specifically, what have we done to date with municipalities? So you might see stats in here such as how many plants, trees we've planted since 1993, or how much money in forestry management grants we've given out. That's about $20,000 for Clarence and Rockland, for example. You have a plan for planting trees here, and I believe I used it this year. I think it's a great program. I don't think there's just enough publicity done for it. The price is right, certainly, and it's good for five years. Well, our experts have been taking a look at the surface as well as underground water. This supervision activity is included in our report, and what's new in 2017 is that we've received close to $1 million worth of grants from the federal government to come up with a hydrogeological model of the South Nation Conservation Authority water basin. This will help us with our flood prevention program, and certainly this is something that we're interested in getting involved in as far as good projects go, and we're also working hand in hand with IBM on this. So it's something that's quite interesting. Well, you had a very good year to start off with, yes, certainly, as far as case studies go, yes. And also, this year we've completed our report on the trends and analysis of forestry cover, and next steps with regard to this project are ongoing and will continue on in 2018. Another grant that we did receive at the beginning of 2017 was the grant that allowed us to make a study of the Clarence Creek, and we installed two instruments in that particular creek to take a look at the water quality from spring to fall, and we will, during the course of winter, have occasion to take a look at the quality samples, of the quality of the samples that we have taken. Also, the impact it has on the fish in these particular water courses, and we'll take a look also at Baltic invertebrates and how the state of their health is. This is also further indication of water quality. We've also identified two indications along this creek where we can plant trees and bushes, and we want to work with students or scouts to plant trees, try to come up with volunteers to help us along with this particular project, and this photograph deals with a project that we've implemented along the Kestod River, along with the good help of students. Students had a great deal of fun in getting involved in all of this, and they've also, you know, they were really into the project and made it theirs, I think. So we want to do this also along Clarence, the Clarence Creek area, and we have two sites that have been pinpointed for this particular activity in the spring of 2018. We've also planned for the planting of trees during this coming spring, and we can also send out a memo to all of you as to the planting dates we'll be making use of. If you have any volunteers or students, high school students, that need to make up volunteer hours to graduate, then, you know, we can add those people onto our roster to help us out. And to wrap up the project, we'll come up with a report concerning our supervision of the work sites and stewardship program initiatives that we've implemented that will be part of the reports we'll be forwarding to council. And also, just to summarize, of course, the last section in this study talks about the different types of things to empower youth and communities, such a sort of different programs that we run when we run a project, some of the things that we, Michelle, have talked about, or has talked about. These are funded by external sources. Now, when we plant trees or monitor stuff like this at Clarence Creek, something or somebody is paying for this. The other 50% is self-generated. Councilor Jean-Marc Lelant was touring the site with us, touring the site quite recently, and all of this is funded by either OPG or the province to get these off the ground. And of course, hopefully, we've been timely. Yes, really, you had 10 minutes allotted to you. But of course, it's just a piece of information. The goal is that we make these so that we can share these with staff to help us with dialogue and planning, to determine what project should be implemented for next year and what our priorities will be. It's a discussion amongst staff, but it's of interest to you also, to determine how work falls within different program categories and how we implement them. If you have any questions? Well, you do have a system, don't you, to predict floods? I'd like to know how it might have been implemented this year, because let me tell you, it would have helped us out greatly. Councilor Lelant?
Well, this report states that you own five properties in Clarence and Rockland, 540 acres. That's quite a sizable piece of land. Where are they? The majority of properties that we own, the M Swamp in Hammond, is situated there and along Gulf Road also. I believe there are some Gulf properties that are owned in partnership with the United Counties of Prescott and Russell?
Well, those properties that you've alluded to are properties sold and proper, but the others are jointly owned, yes. You also have a new project starting up in Laro's Forest along with the Ontario Power Generation folks? Yes, yes. Does Follet Raro's also follow your directives? No, they're not under our supervision, but we also work along with the United Counties of Prescott and Russell, and we also work with the United Counties for things to be done in Laro's Forest that falls under our purview. But the United Counties' contract has to do the surveying and also the study services in Laro's Forest. Well, thank you very much then, but we do not take care of trails. Next one up is Mr. Saint Cartier. Mr. Saint Cartier, you haven't brought your guitar with you, have you, Mr. Saint Cartier? No. He doesn't have his cowboy hat either. So Saint Cartier will be talking to us about the country, Clarence, Rockland, country jamboree. Well, I'm sorry. I won't go through all of the points that I've raised with council. I believe you've received our document. I'd just like to address item A with regard to road closings. We always have a Plan B set aside. We were told that we might have the right to block half of the Beauchamp and Le Meur road to allow access to the country jamboree. Well, I think our firefighters might have something to say about that, you know? There's a lot of people involved. You need access for firefighter services, or firefighting services, should I say? Yes, we have a one-way access on both roads that could be allowed for our good firefighters. You'll have to discuss this with Mr. Wilson, a bylaw enforcement officer, and come up with an understanding, come to an understanding with these people. Well, the reason why Mr. Saint Cartier is here was to give a directive to our chief firefighter, to our fire chief, so that we could... Well, all Mr. Saint Cartier has to do is to go and see you about this. You can discuss things with him and bring back to council what you've concluded to with Mr. Saint Cartier. Does he have to come back with parking matters also? I believe the bylaw deals with that. I don't see where we can get involved with this unless there's a problem with it. Well, let's check it out and come back to our bylaw folks if it needs to come back, and it can always come back. If it doesn't come back, we'll just leave it as is, that's all. But of course, Mr. Mayor, we're talking about the month of July, so we have lots of time to iron things out. Well, I came up with, there's already a bylaw that regulates things like that, and I believe the department can grant some privileges with regard to this. Other points? Well, there might be some other points. I see that the school is in agreement with you with regarding parking privileges. What we did not know initially, when we came up with the country jamboree, that the baseball field... Well, you've noticed that we encountered parking problems right from the outset, and we were told that we could make use of the baseball field for parking purposes. I'm just waiting for them to come back to us to tell us whether we can use their baseball field next year. We can think that in 2018 we might expect 100 to 150 additional RVs. 2017 was a great success, and everybody's expecting to attend Rockland in 2018. Any other questions, Councilor Saint Cartier? Well, I'd like to congratulate the gentleman for the great success that this event had. I attended three evenings. I was told, Mr. Lelant, that you were a great dancer, line dancing. I used to be a great dancer, but not now. Yeah, he's keeping this for his other ladies. Ah, that's an inside joke, that's an inside joke. Well, it's our country jamboree festival, Mr. Mayor, and I hope you're all proud of it. Thank you. We're still waiting to obtain liquor permits down on the corner. That might be an asset, but things are going rather slow concerning this particular liquor license matter, but we hope we'll get over it, we'll obtain permission. Alright? That's fine then. Let's go on now to question period. Does anyone have any questions of town council? If you have, give your name and your address. If you do, no, fine. Let's go on from the report from the United Counties of Prescott, Russell. Last time we discussed the budget, we had it down from 3.5 to 4 something, and we hope it'll go even lower. Now, the warden supper will also be held on the 2nd of December in Vank Lee Kill. Let's go on to committee and staff reports, 9.6. I can read this. Do you guys want me to do this in English or in French? English, please. Alright, perfect then. So, whereas petitions were submitted by residents of Giroux Street, Chamberlain North Street and Chaplin Street regarding council implemented traffic control measures and reduced speed limit at 30 kilometers an hour at the earliest date, and whereas the department does not recommend lowering the speed limits, nor recommend implementing tragic measures along Giroux, Chaplin and others, that the council does not approve reducing speed limits along Giroux, Chamberlain North and Chaplin Street. Moved and seconded, Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me just a comment or so. So, this was obviously a report that was done by your group, your department. So first off, I understand why your department goes through this. You have to go through all of the measures, you have to make sure that we count the traffic and take the speed at which it travels, but I have to say that I'm a little disappointed. A couple of years back, we came up with a bylaw, maybe it was even sooner than that, to tell residents that any time that they had a problem, to go ahead and work and get a petition going, which has worked very well because we now have a clear mandate for the majority of the citizens of the area that's affected to have something done. Now, I understand that you're going through everything. You know, page 57 of your infrastructure book says that this does not fall within the means, but I'm disappointed at the fact that there has to be some part in the department where you would say, "We understand that this is an issue." So yes, our traffic count does say that maybe speeding is not an issue according to the traffic count, but clearly people feel that it is, and I understand that going down to 30, even I've spoken to some of the residents there, and even the school zone is at 40. So going down to 30 would be something that I don't think has ever been done in a street that size, but 40 would be the lowest that we could go. But I don't understand why the department would say, "We see no problems with it," because when you go on these streets, whether it's Edwards, North, Chamberlain, Woods or Catherine, speed is an issue to a certain point where you're traveling at 50 kilometers an hour, which is an average speed that people are going at in Laurier. I can't even imagine 50 kilometers an hour on a small street. The street I live on is Chapman. It's actually quite, you know, it's not as wide, it's more narrow. So obviously, we don't have people that speed up and down, but I have been on those streets and I have seen some of those residents, and so I'm quite disappointed in the fact that even the department would not say, "Let's at least lower it down to 40," which is no skin off our backs to do it, but it doesn't hurt anybody, it actually benefits people, and let's actually look at the budget for upcoming street measures that we can implement. We've had no problems in redoing St. Joseph's, we've just done that, and we've put up two stop signs from St. Joseph's to Sterling and two speed bumps that we've actually put on there. Granted, there are schools there, but we're about to build another big development across the street from Chamberlain, and nothing, absolutely nothing. So, the department, what we are recommending is at the time in terms of lowering the speed limit, we are doing a traffic master plan to designate things, and what we're doing is that we're looking at it during the traffic plan, looking at it as a whole, if you wish, to identify all of the roads where there would be subject to lowering the speed and the financial implications of doing so. In terms of Catherine, these streets, particularly Chamberlain North and Catherine Street, 85% speed rate is 33.5 kilometers an hour. I didn't say that quite well, but what I say is that 33.5% of all traffic is circulating at 30, 30.5 kilometers an hour. They're even, in fact, going slower than the 4 kilometers an hour. That's why the department feels that it might be unwarranted to implement traffic calming measures if we try to take a look at the costs of implementing traffic calming measures. Therefore, if council chooses to recommend one of them, there's a pricing there that would allow council to take decision based on the cost. I appreciate that, and I've read the report. I'm just saying that almost 95 or 99% of people on Catherine Street, if I'm not even mistaken, maybe 100% of the people sign the petition. They're not just signing it because they just feel like they're signing something, they just feel literally that people are speeding and they don't want anyone hurt there. There are a lot of little kids on the streets, like there are on every single one of our wards, on every single residential ward. We have a responsibility, in my opinion, and I hope that members of council share this with me, to protect our citizens, and I think that 50 kilometers an hour on small streets is too high. If we lower it down to at least 30, it gives the police at least something to say, "Well, people are going over 40," so we can actually give them a ticket for it, or whatever the case may be. I just, it just doesn't make any sense. Why don't you just change the... What's that? Well, let's just vote on it. You can suggest that we can go down to 40. I'd just like to add one more point, and I do like your point, Mr. Mayor, with regard to waiting for the traffic study. No offense to you and members of your team, we're still waiting for a parking study, we're still waiting for a lot of studies in this town, and it seems that in a year's time, this council will no longer be the way it is now. Different priorities come in, next thing you know, that gets bumped to the side, and we have another priority that comes in and another report that needs to be done. So I would just like to understand, actually, as Mr. Mayor has stated, we can vote on this one. I personally would like to, at this point, reduce the speed limits to 40 on those streets. We can start with that, and at budget time, I would love to be able to discuss further financial matters on actual traffic calming measures on those streets. I would support, Mr. Mayor, on the 40 idea that has been bantered about. Well, we'll have to vote on this initial resolution first. Any other questions? But the only comment I want to make is that on Giroux Street, there are traffic calming measures that have been implemented and they do work. I believe that 40 does work, reducing it to 40, but I firmly believe that physical barriers, physical installations, regardless of the speed sign, will reduce the speed. So if we put up the sign here at 40, the stats show that the average is 33.5. However, traffic calming might even lower that speed to even lower, which I believe is what we want to accomplish. We want to slow down traffic on those small streets. Mr. Mayor, there are some residents here. I would wonder if you could permit some comments, if that's okay? Find your name and address. Yes, my name is John Taylor, 2657 Chamberlain. Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. I would like to add mine because I happen to live there. I see the traffic going by there every day. I have to stop before I walk across the street with my daughter. Sir, you have to address to me. Okay. Because they come around the corner, they speed up. Now, this summer, this summer, one of my neighbors was actually out on the street, and she complained that she was out shouting at people to slow down, and the city came along, and they put in two little things on the side of the road that caused the traffic to slow down. They would narrow the road, and I noticed that when people would come around this corner, they'd say it, see it, they'd slow down until they went through and then speed up again. So what I'm wondering is this, why it's so quick and so easy to do that? Why is the first approach, why we couldn't do that before the corner, just around the corner by my place and further up the street? It's going to cause people to slow down. I just don't believe that we can install it in a curve? No, I meant before, yes, definitely, before the curve, and just after the curve, because they come around and they take off. Well, right now, winter's coming, so they're all removed in the winter time. Yes, I understand that, Mr. Mayor. So I believe the first step would be to lower the speed limit to 40? Yes, but I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, there are a lot of kids, they're out playing a road hockey, for example, and it's an accident that's waiting to happen, sir. Thank you very much. I think that we can bring the other, who can implement other measures to slow down traffic during this coming summer, next year, if I may. I'm 2650 Chamberlain. You'll have to repeat. Michelle Minier is my name, 2650 Chamberlain Street. I live directly in the curb, in the curve, so I constantly have occasion to see what's going on there. This afternoon, at 3:00 PM, I was in my garage in the process of working there, and there was a blue Mazda that went by completely on the other side where the curve is, and the tires were squealing. Each and every winter time, there are some cars that go into my driveway, wind up in my driveway, they can't make the curve because they travel too fast. Let me tell you that speed is a problem all throughout this municipality. This curve, Mr. Mayor, is quite difficult to negotiate, the one that's in our development. I don't know what happened, but it's very difficult to negotiate for cars, you know, to remain in their own lane. I believe that by, what we designed, the reason why I designed it was to reduce traffic speed by putting in a sharper curve. Well, if we put up, I understand what you're saying, if we put up some speed bumps, you know, people come from Highway 17 and they just whiz by. One of the other things is, don't hesitate to phone the OPP. You have to keep reminding them and getting them out there. They're really the only ones that can ticket them or do something. That's a good slowing down process, you know? Well, we don't see the police officers all that often in our neck of the woods, let me tell you. I know they take care of a very vast territory, but I know that someone had phoned police officers, they'd been parked there for weeks on end and didn't catch any culprits. But, but, people are traveling not as fast though since they've been there. I'm not in agreement as to when this traffic study was conducted, but I'm really surprised to hear that the mean average speed was 33 kilometers, you know, stemming from the results of this traffic study. I don't know exactly, Mr. Mayor, what happened with this, but Catherine Street does have speed bumps and things go very well, well, certain parts of Catherine Street. There are also some concerns, they're completing installation work on Catherine Street. I believe that 20 or so houses will be added along to that with about 20 or 30 additional cars, given those additional homes will add to the traffic flow. So I don't think it's a good idea to wait another year to do anything. Thank you. Who's in favor of this particular bylaw, this one? Well, the resolution was not to... Are you in favor or opposed? Are you in favor of the bylaw? If you're not in favor of the bylaw, I'm just asking who's in favor. Don't please raise your hand. Alright, fine, it's defeated. Alright, Councilors Ant, come up with your resolution or your counter resolution. So basically, what I'd like to add, and I don't know, you're going to have to help me out with this, Mrs. Willet, to include Giroux, Catherine and Chamberlain North to lower the posted speed limits to 40 kilometers an hour, all three, effective immediately? Yes, all three. Well, it can't be effective immediately because the bylaw has to be implemented and voted on. Well, implemented then as soon as possible, hopefully by the next meeting. Alright, hold on. I'll second that particular motion. I'll second that particular motion. We're just working out the details, Mr. Mayor. So, the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves lowering the speed limits from fifty to forty on Giroux, Chamberlain North, Catherine Street to forty kilometers an hour. Forty kilometers an hour? And be it resolved that traffic calming measures be installed. Oh, over and above that? Well, we'll be discussing this at the budget. And that, all right, then? That traffic calming measures for the said streets, only for those streets or for all? For all streets. And that traffic, well, for Chamberlain North, Catherine, and Giroux. Let me tell you, you'll be, one of our employees will be busy planting posts that will calm traffic down. All right, seconded then by my, by Mr. Lallonde. So, speed limit going down to forty and traffic calming measures on all of these three streets, seconded by Councilor Jean-Marc Lallonde. All right. Hold on a minute there, Councilor Zant, I'm nearly there. Is there an additional? Yes. That the Committee of the Hall recommends that council approves lowering the speed limits on Giroux Street, Chamberlain North Streets, and Catherine Streets to forty kilometers an hour, and that traffic calming measures for the said streets be considered for the 2018 budget, seconded by Councilor Lallonde. All those in favor? All those in favor? Carry then, thank you. It was not an, all those, it was not, I am in favor that it was pronounced all that loudly, but it was, look, it will be brought to the Committee of the Hall, you see, it will be brought to the regular meeting to be approved and finalized, and it will come into law then. And the signs will go up after then. All right, folks? So, thank you very much. Item nine point one, 2018 calendar of meetings. Did the Committee of the Hall recommend, that council recommend the calendar of meetings 2018 with the proposed changes that have been proposed by the Clerk's Office, seconded by Councilor Sima. Just a question, maybe for clarification purposes, I was taking a look at page thirty-one, paragraph nine point one, part five. It states, "The second and fourth Monday of January." It's going to be the third Monday and rather the fourth. Which document is that, Councilor Lallonde? Page thirty-one, but which document? Is it one, two document, one, two, three, or four? Are you, yeah, I'm taking a look at the document of procedures. Oh, this has been modified? I see. Mr. Mayor, if you'll allow me, the following comment. The procedural bylaw was modified by another bylaw, so I put in both bylaws in appendix here, because dates don't jive, really. Fine, thank you then. Thank you. I only had detail. First, I don't really care, I'd just like to let you guys know, we're in the midst of March break, and we're asked to parachute ourselves into a meeting on the Monday. I'm just asking if we could hold our meeting on Wednesday. My children are not subject to March break, they're past that, well, or those that go off on holidays, you know. Well, the only place I go down south is in Winchester. Wow. March break is slated for the fifteenth, is it, of March, next? Yes. I'm sorry, from the twelfth to the sixteenth of March. So we'd obtain our documentation on the fifteenth or the fourteenth during the evening. So we have the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. If some of us are left somewhere, yes, that's right, some who are absent, let's also give the opportunity to our town employees to benefit from their week, and it would give them an additional two days to take a look at things. Well, even, you know, if there are some people that are off on holidays, unless that, it's not, it makes no difference. All right, then, I just want you to take advantage of this week. But for all town councillors to be allowed the opportunity to read this documentation as a whole, or on other Wednesday nights where we scheduled meetings during other holiday periods. So instead of the nineteenth, the twenty-first of March would be the meeting, the second meeting, and that's, that will be come up, that will come up at the regular meeting of Town Council. Could you send us an email once this is approved? Or, at the beginning of the year, you'll have a document sent to you detailing all of the meetings throughout all of the months. All those in favor? Carry then, fine. They've already started up with, all right, let's go on now to item nine point two, Mrs. Sima, daycare services policy. The Committee of the Hall recommends Town Council to authorize the Director of Community Services to approve the policies and procedures of the City of Clarence and Rockland Daycare Services Policy as recommended in Report LOI 2017 dash zero-two. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Questions? All those in favor? I did have a question, Mr. Mayor. I had a question, okay, go ahead. The waiting lists are quite different from those who receive grants as opposed to those who do not receive grants? No. It's the same waiting list that applies to everyone. I see, well, thank you then. Other questions? All those in favor? Carry then. Adopted, Mr. Mayor? All right. Next recommendation, item nine point three. New establish, new regulation to establish and regulating bylaw for the Clarence Rockland Fire Department. Councilor Grimal. The Committee of the Hall recommend that council adopt a regulation to establish and regulate bylaw for the Clarence Rockland Fire Department. Any questions? I think that when we attended the last meeting, the last meeting, we had discussed the site, proposed site. We were talking about ice rescue versus water rescue, and I believe that council had asked for more documentation or more time to, or more options at least as to what we could do. It seems that the way this is written out now, you've decided that, you've decided on one course of action. I'm just asking why have we not come back with options? Well, I see that, my understanding is that the direction was to establish a service level that the, that was alluded to at the previous Committee of the Hall meeting was. The service level was reached, equipment is still up for debate, to purchase equipment to honor those levels, that's what my understanding was, that's what's incorporated in the budget. I guess everything's open for debate. So you're telling us that if we don't buy the equipment, you won't provide the service. I'm saying that we're offering the laws of service that are being identified in the bylaw that are being proposed by this evening, but those have not been previously established in a bylaw. So in theory today, we're providing levels of service that you've never asked a department to do, so we've now incorporated these levels of service into the bylaw using the equipment that we have today in our department. As discussed in our previous meeting, I would strongly recommend that there's equipment that needs to be changed in order to better provide those levels of service, both for our members as well as members of the public that we're expected to serve. Those are budget discussions that will have different implications. Well, we can bring that back at budget time. Well, why don't we take this up until the budget is done? There's no rush, they're still providing the service. I agree with Mr. Lallonde that if we say we don't have the services, the finances for a boat, or whatever else we would need, then we can just go back and he will modify the service and the bylaw to become effective. By talking about, oh my God, this is the H M S what, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to add to that. We need the bylaw to establish the level of service that you want so that we can come back with budget proposals. To put the cart in front of the horse would be, we'll establish the budget first and base the services on what we want to fund. Well, really, you don't have the equipment to give good service on ice. Well, we do have an inflatable R D C boat today, but it has fourteen patches on it. It functions today, it's long on the tooth, but our department folks still train on it. We have ice suits, we have ice rope, we train on ice every year, as we provide water rescue services using the boat that was donated to the department some years ago. The service level, I guess, we have been providing this level of service for a number of years. I think that we need to have this engraved in the bylaw, saying that we want to have it integrated in the level of service, where we should have, enter into a discussion as to the proper tools to deliver proper levels of service. Are you comfortable in delivering this service? I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable in offering this service, but I'm strongly recommending that if we continue offering this level of service, we should come into a dialogue to have the tools to do us, the proper tools to do it. We've had a boat for a number of years that we've used several times a year, it's been in the water several times every year, and we haven't had an issue, knock on wood. But at the same time, you told us that the, this boat, that the boat was donated, and to be able to do your work, and I can remember you using the terms safely and effectively, that this boat was not the proper boat, correct? So that's what I'm saying. You may say that we're putting the cart before the horse, but if we keep this as a draft going to budget, you're still following your procedures, the procedures you're following at this point in time until budget time. I think it's easier to keep it as a draft, keep it in mind, let's proceed to the budget according to this, and if we decide that, you know, we don't have the finances to perform ice rescue operations, it might be a ice rescue search and recovery because of the volume, then we're delegated to make this decision as far as levels of service, but if you want to adopt the bylaw. I think that Mr. Lallonde's idea is very sound, Mr. Lallonde's. Well, I have the serious reservations as to the level of service. I understand that the level of service during the summer months is okay. You mentioned in our last discussion that council, you know, ice rescue, by the time you guys get there, it's a recovery, there's not much rescue to be done, and it's a highly dangerous situation to be trained as a firefighter for that, and it's also difficult, a difficult spot to put our people in. So to me, I have serious reservations about ice rescue, not so much with water rescue, but that's me. But ice rescue, Mr. Wilson, through the mayor, I think that the reality is that council needs to have some very clear picture in their minds that we're really talking about two different levels of ice rescue. Ice rescue in the middle of the Ottawa River where we have moving current below ice, is extremely high risk. We've had fatalities in the province of firefighters in training scenarios caught up in fatalities where training with regard to ice rescue has been suspended throughout the province because of the risk associated with that, which is why this proposed bylaw, we said that we'll only do shore-based rescue in those environments, because the rescue profiling in those environments is extremely limited. Ice rescue in terms of someone falling through a pond or a dugout or whatever the case may be in a farm, or on a farm, yes, the rescue profile with those is different, there's a survivability profile is there, cold water submerged, people have been rescued after forty-five minutes submerged in cold water, and they have been revived. But what I can say is this, in Clarence and Rockland, we've acknowledged that people do ice fishing, people go out and enjoy activities on the ice, and I think we owe to our residents to have a plan in place and to our first responders to make sure that they are adequately trained to do this. I mean, we can all look at other responders, emergency responders, and people are there, they don't have the equipment to do there, other emergency responders put themselves in harm's way to effect rescues, whether they be police officers entering, burning buildings, paramedics entering, burning buildings, it happens every day across our country, from well-intentioned individuals trying their best to try to save someone in harm's way. We owe it to our residents to have a method in place, a plan in place to help those in trouble. That's my opinion. Now that you've stated that comment, it kind of puts my perspective a little bit more along the lines of Mr. Lallonde. I guess I want to say is, if we choose that we're not going to move forward with this kind of training for whatever reason, we have a responsibility to put massive, big, clear signs wherever there are accesses or access areas to ice, saying that this municipality is not equipped, and enter into your own, with your own, enter at your own risk. If you want to get on that surface with your snowmobile and go fishing there, well, you see, what's going to happen, Mr. Mayor, there's going to be a snowmobile at some point in time that's going to go a little deeper, get caught, emergency services will be called. The media will get hold of the fact that we did nothing, and we need to prepare for the fact that if we're only going to do shore rescue and not deep river rescue, we have to put up signs. If you go past a certain amount of feet, you're on your own. And I think at that point, I guess, and I hate to say that we're, you know, you know what I'm trying to say, you know what I'm trying to say, that's fine. Does the O P P have the equipment? They do not, Mr. Lallonde, because it is their responsibility. Well, it's everybody's responsibility. On the Ottawa River, it's the responsibility of the O P P. Well, they don't have a rescue time for ice rescue, that's for sure. There's one in Hawksbury, and there's one out of Kingston, I believe, for boats, for ice rescue, we have no capacity for ice rescue. They have a diver recovery team that are trained in cold water stuff, they can go into ice for body recovery, but again, those teams come from across the province. You can look at a team that comes from, really, it's not going to be a rescue. Historically, when you've seen untrained fire departments and other services across our province, the reality is, someone's going to call nine-one-one when their kid falls through the ice. That's the reality, and the expectation is that someone's coming and they're going to do something. If we don't equip and train our staff as to how we're going to deal with that, we have to provide them with a pretty solid answer as to why they're not going out, what we're going to tell Mr. and Mrs. whomever, why they can't go out there and rescue their son or daughter. That's the reality that we face in our service, we have to come up and try and find. Well, right now, we are training our people, yes, we train our people for that, we have our equipment for that, we can go on the ice in a non-moving water environment. If there's fishing in the bay where there's no moving water underneath that ice, we will sign firefighters in ice suits with a boat tethered to shore, tethered to shore, and try to affect a rescue then with no moving water there. Well, I believe that, yes, Mr. Belleguet, my concern in all of this is that if we put in writing that we are providing these services, that we are training our emergency responders for ice and training rescue, and we invest in equipment, once we put it in copy, saying that this is something that we do, then there are expectations there. As Medio has stated, if someone is drowning and if the call is put in, the expectation is that we are prepared and we'll respond. And if we don't respond, then we'll really get criticized because we made that commitment. And if it means that, you know, we don't respond properly, we'll open up a whole can of worms. If we buy a boat, and if that boat, however, is left in dry dock, and it's only used now and then, people is going to use it for water rescue, somebody's going to drown, and then this, they're going to ask, "Well, how come we couldn't get to the boat?" They're going to say, "Well, it would take an hour to get to the boat and get it off its moorings. Maybe we should, you know, have people patrolling the river," you know, "offer a level of service and compel our fire department to offer a whole new level of service." It's because, Mr. Belleguet, we do have a river coming into our city, you see. The person in Castleman doesn't have that situation, but we do have a water plant, or plant that impacts our residents. This is a level of service which is probably not like Montreal or Toronto, where they have full-time people on the water, but I agree, now that you're saying that we're not doing moving water, ice rescue, I think that we have the capability of doing what we're doing, and then we decide if they get new equipment at budget time, but we are already providing this service. We're, we've already trained the guys that do have the equipment now. You've said that, I'm all in favor of keeping the level. Now, equipment-wise, we might have to look at some things. We're opening up a can of worms. Well, we're already there, you see? Well, we're already there, you see? If you have a fire and the truck's not there, it has to leave from, you know, a starting point, and the same rule applies to firefighters. Look, you have to get the fire truck to the fire, the same rule applies, you have to get the boat to the scene of a drowning. You only have a few minutes. Where are we going with this, in any event? We can't discuss that. I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we're not going to save everyone. Certainly, that's our goal and intention, that we do save anyone. I hope we never have an emergency call in our municipality, we have the safest municipality, and the trucks will never roll. That would be a perfect world, it's not reality. The minute we have human beings on this planet, we have human beings that are bound to wind up in trouble. Our hope is that someone will come and help them when they're having a bad day. Does that mean that they're drowning? Not necessarily. Does that mean that they have a capsized boat, they're clinging onto that boat? Possibly. Does it mean there's a boat adrift on the river? Possibly. I can't give you all of the answers, I can't give you my words, it will have another loss. We've had people die in fires in our municipalities in the past, it's an unfortunate municipal situation, no one wants to think about those scenarios, but it has happened. Again, we don't do a lot of water rescues, we don't fire a lot of, we don't fight a lot of fires either, but at the end of the day, I think there needs to be some kind of plan in space, a catch-all that says, I'm in trouble, I pick up the phone, dial 911, and someone's going to come to help, unless we put up signs and say, we're no longer in this business. But as the councillor mentioned, we live along the river, we promote the river, we have river festivals to celebrate the river, we owe it to our residents. Councillor Levaire, did you have a question? Did you have a question? Well, you mentioned that we had a pontoon, isn't there, a rescue team that makes use of the pontoon boat? Well, it's not a team, a rescue team, it's a maritime supervision or surveillance team, but during the wintertime, this team is, is used to recuperate, to recoup. But there's a team in Ottawa that's qualified to perform ice rescue operations. There's one more item that I think that we're going to have to discuss in a closed meeting concerning the chart that you've submitted to us, I'm not sure when we should discuss that. Next meeting, maybe? Well, to me, there's a problem there. Well, I propose that we table it for the next meeting and that we bring it for further discussion at a closed meeting. Everyone in, is everyone in favor of deferring the next item on the agenda? Let's go on to, you establishing a regulating bylaw for the Clarence right now, we've, Mr. Mayor, we've just covered that. I'm just trying to pass it prematurely, I'm sorry, I've come back to that again. All right. Nine point four, two thousand and seventeen corporate work plan status. Councillor Zant, resolution that report two thousand and seventeen dash zero two seven, entitled two thousand and seventeen corporate work plan status be received for information purposes, seconded by Councillor Belanguet. Any questions? None? Well, the question I had, Mr. Mayor, was this, why is Saint Jacques closed? You mentioned that a little while ago, but I forgot what you said. The three projects on Saint Jacques are closed. It's the original Saint Jacques, that was the six million dollar, well, this one was closed, we had to retain engineering services to validate the infrastructure, so that that is closed. The other point of that is that we had requested funding for the Saint Jacques project, and it was turned down, so that's why this project is closed, but it doesn't mean that it will never come back again. That's correct, correct, but it's beyond the ten-year scope of this plan. All those in favor, then? Carried, thank you. Item nine point five, emergency management program bylaw. The Committee of the Hall recommends to council that it adopt the emergency management program bylaw, and that the emergency management program receives a revised mandate and implement and update the emergency management plan to ensure our safety. Seconded by Councillor Belanguet, any questions? Much like Councillor Lalonde has stated earlier on, this is something that we should discuss in a closed meeting session. But, yeah, the chart, do you want us to defer discussions or decision, a deference? Because we're dealing with the organizational chart here. Oh, I'm sorry, I meant, and... Mr. Wilson, this is something that we're mandated by the province to revise, is it not? We're dealing here with the organizational chart, that's right. Any other questions? All those in favor? Secondary plan contract, that the Committee of the Hall recommend to council that it adopt a bylaw to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into a signed contract with OTAN consultants for the secondary plan contract with regard to the property that is to be added on to the urban sprawl in Rockland for a price of one hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Councillor Belanguet, what's happening, what's happening? We're purchasing a property? No, a study will be commissioned, because the property that the developer wishes to develop is on the other side of the street, because this property is not in the urban sprawl plan to develop it as a residential area, we have to take a look at the grading, the grades, et cetera. And this has been in the works for quite a while now. It's located right to the east of Karo and David, Monsieur Saint-Garcier. We're called upon to pay for this initiative jointly? Yes, with the developer, because it is our plan. But, well, that, that falls under expansion, really. The property can be developed? Councillor Lalonde? Mr. Lalonde? Now, when can we expect to obtain this report from that particular company to be able to go ahead to settle things here? Because I know that the developer really wants to move on this as quickly as possible, so how long are we expected to wait? Well, it's a fairly heavy-laden process that comes into play here. This is something that will be furthered along as quickly as possible. There was a schedule that was drawn up, and these folks will follow the schedule that was laid down. Are we talking about six months or a year from now? It's something that might take approximately six months, on or about six months to implement. I thought it would be even longer. Well, maybe in this case, who knows? Well, we're going to rely on what you're saying here tonight. Mr. Keogh might tell us how to go about speeding things up a tad bit. Well, well, all those in favor, folks? Thank you, then, thank you. Other items? Do you have any questions to our directors? Nine point one, presentation of the proposed two thousand and eighteen preliminary budget. Mr. Keogh, you're on. Well, Mr. Mayor, given Mr. Lalonde's comment, we are handing you the budget tonight. We're handing it to you, and we'll do work on it next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. But before then, Mr. Denuayy will explain how budget, how the budget will work out this year. We've introduced a bit of changes or modifications, I will have you get a copy of the budget and have you do the work that's necessary to do in the coming weeks. Before Mr. Denuayy commences, I just want to say a big thank you to our directors and managers and all the finance staff, it's a big push. Every year, it's a push to have the budget done. We believe that we're presenting to you tonight a budget that we can work with to achieve the goals that the council would like. So, I'm going to let Mr. Denuayy, he's going to explain to you how the process works, but we didn't want to have that as a distraction while he's explaining how the books work, because it's important to understand that. Also, at the beginning of the book, you have a very detailed report that's been put together that explains the essence of the budget. All right, I will be quiet. I'm sure that it's going to be as easy a process as dealing with county books. As Mr. Keogh and Ms. Collier has mentioned, the purpose of my presentation is to summarily go through the budget processes working this year. I'm sure that for most of you, this is not your budget, your first budget, but we're trying to implement some modifications each year to make understanding of the budget much easier. So once again, this year, there are three major sections within the budget. The first section deals with the general overview, containing the directors and my report, as well as many blanket summaries that recaps everything. The second section deals with the operational budget, the operational budget, and the third section deals with assets or capital expenditures, or capital assets budget. Let's go into individual sections, the first section, overview and summary. As I mentioned, the report is drafted both in French and in English, and what's important to bear in mind is that the report has a summary that deals with mostly everything, but the two important appendix, appendices, a term that we'll make use of often are major changes. I'd like to insist on what major changes are. These are pressures. In fact, in May, Mr. Keogh, I brought forward a report outlining those pressures imposed by individual directors, and that the tax rate should be increased by about seven percent to meet all budgetary pressures. That's what we mean by, by this. And appendix B deals with options to whittle down the tax rate, and each department has have come up with options, they're all included in appendices in appendix B to bring down the tax rate. Now, these are all graphs that are contained in the summary section of the budget documents. Now, what I'll deal with tonight is the municipal tax rate now. This details how, what the impact is on an average citizen, the increase on the tax rate, and the increase on water and sewage rates as well, there's a summary of income expenditures, we see variations amongst departments in their summary departments, summary reports, basically, and a summary of their expenditures, and this year, we've included training and conferences. Each department will have a budget for training, and I believe it's important for us to let you know how these budgets are being made use of. If you take a look at this section, you'll see how this budget is used by individual departments. And finally, we have other end-of-year information. It's a report that's produced by the finance department at end of year that resumes assets and liabilities, expenditures and income. So, and that, these figures are as of thirty-first of December, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. And the other thing that's going to be important will be the debt situation. There are two pages, that's quite important, I won't go into details with them, you'll have a list of details, a list of the detailed projects that have been approved, divided in three categories. The first category is those projects that have been terminated, debt has been issued and completed. Second section are those projects whose budgets have been approved by council, financed by debt, but the projects have not either started up or have not yet been completed. And finally, the third section deals what we propose with the capital expenditure fund, a section financed by the debt. You'll see all of those projects that are financed by debt. The second page deals with projections with those projects in mind, and we've projected, we've talked about the balance of the debt over a three-year spread up to twenty twenty, and we've talked about the interest charge and the impact also on the annual reimbursement amount that has to be respected. So, the, everyone's waiting for this particular result, so you can readily see that the total of, there's one point three million dollars is the total of major changes, all of the pressures that were heaped upon our shoulders that we needed to tackle. Seven point thirty-seven percent initial tax increase that was proposed, and then directors came up with a list of nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars' worth of options. What's important to keep in mind is this, is that these options that are promoted by administrators, there are options, but they all have an impact to that. You know, we might be eliminating programs or eliminate services, these are not nine hundred thousand dollars' worth of dollars, you know, that gather dust at the bottom of drawers. Now, what's the impact of the two point twenty-nine percent that you can see here? You see, forty-three dollars on an annual basis for a mean average residence. A mean average residence is in a house that's assessed at two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Also, you'll determine that there was a study commissioned for water and sewer rates, so in fact, what this study determined was the following, to support the budget both from an operational capital standpoint, water and sewers, we needed to come up with a three percent increase. I won't go into details, but three percent deals with variable costs or fixed costs, and that represents a twenty-one dollar on an annual basis, again, for an average family, twenty-one dollar increase. So, the yield is sixty-four dollars for a residence, but we can also say five dollars per net increase, really, for that particular section. Let's continue on with how we work, our operational budget. I gave you an example, not for your, for purpose of reading, but just to explain the way in which things work. Ah, you followed Mr. Keogh's advice, I see, I see, right. This summary, you'll find it in each department. You'll note that the results for the end of the year two thousand and sixteen, we've come up with a two thousand and seventeen budget, major changes and options that come up with a total of the two thousand and eighteen budget, and the variation deals with major changes minus the options. This is an example that applies to the finance department here. Let's continue on, after this summary, I see you went by this one rather quickly, did you not? All right, then. What you'll readily notice is a list of all changes, the total of the list will equal what the figures that was contained in the summary that I alluded to early on, earlier on. We're dealing with major changes here, and explanations with regard to those major changes. And once we've dealt with changes, we've applied the same philosophy to options and deductions, and all lists will contain an end totaled, which will reflect in the end summary. And following that, an even smaller type, I believe you're all familiar with those reports, those are reports stemming from our own accounting system that are included at the end of our documents, reflecting changes if all options are retained and implemented. Now, let's revisit the preceding document. You see, we put down the page number here in small type, but it refers to those particular charts that you have here. If you want to refer to a particular line, it refers to a particular page number also. And sometimes it might lead to a given conclusion, because we want to exert a And sometimes it might lead to a given conclusion because we want to exert a pressure that leads to a reduction of a certain amount. It's possible that there might not be a modification or variance because it might impact the same account. Now, let's go on now to our assets-based budget. We have... And it's quite similar to what was presented in the director's report. There are ongoing projects, projects that will be terminated at the end of 2017, projects that are ongoing after 2017. And this is also... These are also other objects we have or subjects. We have the number of projects and the total budget inherent to those budgets that are requested and where the funds will come from. Some projects have asterisks beside them, and these asterisks mean the following: These are projects that are ongoing but require additional funds to be completed. So when they have an asterisk, then it means that we were short of funds and they'll be... These projects will be completed in 2018. Now, what's new this year in the debt section, A2, debt other, should I say? Debt other? We propose to issue debt that won't have any impact on our tax grade because debt payment will stem from other sources of financing. So Mr. Lénard decided to write it in this particular fashion in his management program. So there would be a debt that would be paid out through another fund, an active fund in our budget. And here's another example, a capital expenditure project. For each and every project that we propose, you'll note the project that's requested, the financing sources for the project with a description of the project, and something new for this year also. You don't see it here, but program authority or asset management plan. So we're asking ourselves the following: Do we already have a plan that states that we need to go through with this project? Or is someone that's... Something that compels us to do this project? And at the end, the operational impact item is the annual impact with regard to this project. If we propose to implement a new... To put in a new heating system, shall we... Will this lead to annual savings? Or if we add, let's say, a new vehicle to our Folotilla, will that give rise to higher gas expenditures? Mr. Mayor? You can't see... Well, we can't see. No, I know what you mean. But the project sheets deal with Page 5A. This year, we're talking about a one-year capital expenditure program, but for the coming years, we'll be dealing with five-year capital expenditure programs. This is a template that we'll be using next year and we'll be making use of five-year templates next year. This year, we're making use of one-year templates. Well, fine, so we'll probably have you back here for the next five years, then. I might not be here. Who knows? Who knows? And all of the text is much bigger in the book. These are just examples. Mr. Keogh? Mr. Keogh's report the last year was also very well thought out. The last thing that I forgot to mention during the course of my presentation, if I revert to the previous chart that recaps all of those projects, we've added page numbers. Sometimes projects have more than one page to detail them out, but you can really leaf through the project as a whole. Some projects are multi-paged projects. It seems that it's a much better-done budget this year as opposed to last year. Oh, it's even better, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you, Mr. Denoye, and thank you, Mr. Keogh, also. Do you have any questions? Councillor Zandt? Two quickies. First of all, Mr. Lénard and your team, thank you very much for your construction on Victorious Street. Everyone's happy with it. Everybody who wants to drive on 350 feet of the best road in town, that's the one right now, it's not completely done. I spoke to each of them, but it's not completely done, but close to. Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
I had a call last week until I realized that the resident was in Mr. Grimaud's ward, but I'm going to bring it up to you, but it seemed a little odd. The resident called me and said, for some reason, the no parking sign in front of my house has disappeared. And I said, that's odd, we haven't done anything with parking. And when I spoke with Mr. Dida, he confirmed that that was a law, that it was passed five years ago, and we just got around to it now. Five years ago! It doesn't necessarily... Well, I don't think it should work like that. I'm pretty sure that if it's been five years, having a no parking sign up, the fact that it's actually very near a fire hydrant is a concern. I'm not sure if that was taken into account, so I just wanted to make sure that if a bylaw is passed, you can do it within less than a year, but if it comes for... If it takes for more than five, then you have to go back to council for clarification. I'm sorry, through the mayor. I don't know who took that sign down. It would not typically be our department. I don't know if it came out of streets and roads. I thought it would have been bylaw. My apologies. I'm sorry. It was a bylaw matter. I could come up with that email and... Either way, either way. Maybe we should look at that situation. Sounds there might be a backstory in there? We need to look into this. Yes, because it's very confusing. Thank you. That's all I had. There are new speed limits there on Landry Street, so maybe? They've got an arrow saying 60 a little further down? I just got comments. It could take a few months, really, to put up necessary signage. We're still waiting for the new sign, by the way, at the bottom of Saint Joseph Street because there's a new stop sign at the bottom of Saint Joseph Avenue Park. And we ask for the big new signs because, again, the other day, I was stopped and someone went right through. Well, that's not me, even if you're looking at me when saying this. Every time that you put up new stop signs. It's close to the school. I went there the other day and actually someone almost got hit. You know, when I used to stop there. Do we keep those in stock, those? Do we have more? Do we have to order more every time? You must have some in stock. Those slowing down signs at Saint Joseph Avenue Park, we should put one up there. Councillor Grimaud? Well, thank you again to Mr. Lénard and his department. The last meeting, I talked about Mr. Caron Street being marked with lines and the next day... The next day! Come on! Throw him flowers! Give him compliments because he deserves them! Well, I learned of the reason behind all of this. There was a problem with regard to the width of lines to be painted, to be drawn on the top of the roadway. And thank you also for the work done on Saint Joseph. We talked about finishing work performed on landscaping. That was done, but things are much cleaner there and the rest is to be completed this coming spring. And I received feedback from Caron saying, had you just received a call for that? Yeah. Two questions. Burnt-out lights, streetlights. Who's responsible to report this to our attention? The bylaw enforcement officer? Could he not report the situation to your office? There's someone that patrols the streets on a regular basis that goes by. Sometimes they might not notice if some streetlights are out or not, are burnt out or not. Well, at this point in time, let me tell you, it's darker earlier during the day, so we're trying to identify what's effective along Cumberland. We're following the standard procedures suggested by the province, the standard OMMs. We have a year to identify problem areas. There are some residents that phone us up also, and we change those burnt-out traffic lights. There's burnt-out streetlights. There's one in Clarence that's been burnt out for the past year, close to the Case Populaire. There are three along Laurier Street that have been burnt out for quite a while. One has been replaced. Another question also? Those places where there are some small benches, there are some garbage there and it tips over. And the garbage container in front of the church has been tipped over on the south side. It's broken now. There's one on the north and the south side, so... Councillor Lalonde? How are your discussions concerning Cannon Road with those involved? Well, I think we'll bring it back on the agenda. As things stand right now, we'd better sign those agreements we have with the city of Ottawa right now. I believe that counties will take their time in finalizing things. There are some... There are other mayors that objected that we take over Cannon Road, but my intention is to bring it back to everybody's attention and to enter into an agreement with the town of... With the city of Ottawa. I don't think this will cost us all that much. They're not that expensive, right? We're talking about crushed stone roads that we share with the city of Ottawa on Cannon roadway? Yeah. Ones... Yeah, one is made out of crushed stone, the other one's in gravel. Mrs. Simaun? I'd like to thank your department, Mr. Boucher. They've nearly finished the exterior work, the siding work on the establishment that needed work in Saint Pascal and finished work on the door. So thanks. Mr. Lalonde? There was a heritage sign put up. Marieve Belanger put up a lot of work there. Individual municipalities have heritage signs put up. There's one put up in front of the town hall. There are other heritage signs that will be put up throughout the town, the city of Clarence and Rockland, and a lot of volunteers have put in a lot of time and hours. I guess the heritage tour bus was about three-quarters full. Others wanted to attend this tour but did not show up because they had not given their names beforehand. Anything else? That's it? Well, adjournment called at 9:58. Thank you, one and all, and good evening.